All members of Baswa are present this evening with the exception of Fairbanks and Jurgens. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by Baswa and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Baswa member so requests. First is A, approve agenda as submitted, B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting, and C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on -- I beg your pardon. Receive and place on file all materials. It must be our last meeting, which was September 7th, 2021, as on file in the City Clerk's office.
Actually, it should read, "C" should be received and placed on file on materials having bearing on this meeting, D, then is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021, as on file in the City Clerk's office.
Do you have a different form?
No, I'm reading it off the online version. The online version is correct.
Okay. I'd accept a motion.
I move that the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved. Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
And that is approved 9-0. Thank you. We have no public hearings. Next is a resolution. Resolution number 64, executing Task Order Number 17 for the Engineer/Owner Agreement between the city and Burns McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated for professional services, including preparation of an annual reporting year 2021 NDEE air admissions inventory report, performing RY2021 greenhouse gas screening calculations for the US EPA RY2021 mandatory GHG emissions inventory report, and semi-annual groundwater monitoring reporting.
I move that Resolution Number 64 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution Number 64 be passed and adopted.
Burns McDonald's are the engineers we use on our landfill. As you can see, we have a couple of items that we need to have, a new task order for them to take care of air emissions, they need to go out and do the testing and studies on those. The semi-annual groundwater monitoring, help us fill that out and get that submitted. Total cost of this task order is $42,000. It's what we budgeted for. We just need to have a meeting to approve the task order itself.
So, all these acronyms mean what?
So, GHG is greenhouse gases.
I got that. What is US EPA?
United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you. Anyone? All right, your vote, please. That is approved. Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
9-0. Resolution Number 64 has been passed and adopted. We have no ordinances. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to Baswa for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by Baswa at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Yes, sir?
You want my name and address and all that?
Please.
Larry Wolken, 1921 Irving. Just like to thank you guys that I saved one property getting cleaned up, and I hope it's just off to a good start. And another thing, I don't know if we have an ordinance, kind of gripes me a little bit too, is people putting stuff out the curb and putting--
Larry, we're in a Baswa meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I really appreciate you coming up, but it's not really germane to--
You should have cut me off right away.
No, no, you're all right. It's not germane to the Baswa meeting, but we will have our city council meeting and another public forum.
Okay.
If you want to do it then.
Yeah, we take good comments, too.
Thanks, Larry. Anyone else? All right, let's adjourn the Baswa meeting.
I move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:04 PM.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:04 PM. Your vote, please. Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
And that's approved 9-0. Hope you get stuck going home. All right, let's move to city council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the city council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the council are present with the exception of Councilman Fairbanks. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 7th, 2022, as on file in City Clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $716,345.93. F, approval of Baswa report of claims in the amount of $58,211.99. G, refer claim of Mike Lance and Sarah McLaughlin regarding damages to their personal property to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. H, Resolution Number 6862, entering into a lease between the city of Beatrice and the city of Fairbury for the rental of a street sweeper currently owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. I, Resolution 6863, executing a short form subcontract agreement. And Exhibit B subcontractor scope of work between the city and NGC Group Incorporated regarding the installation of a water main for the new apartments along Irving Street, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. NJ, Resolution Number 6864, executing an agreement between the city and Blue Rivers Area Agency on Aging, supporting the services of the agency that they provide to the Beatrice Senior Center and senior citizens of Beatrice. Is there any item that anyone wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Mr. McLean.
I move that the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved and ratified as presented. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Still approved 7-0. Next is the presentation of our auditor's report and the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending September 30th, 2021, from BKD. With us is our finance director, Hannah Bell, and also from BKD, Abby Dobson. Welcome, ladies.
Great, well, thank you, mayor and council members, for the opportunity to come and present to you today. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Abby Dobson. I'm an audit director with BKD out of the Lincoln, Nebraska practice. I've worked with the city now for a number of years, and I'm here to present to you on two documents that I believe you have in front of you. We'll start with the annual comprehensive financial report. That's the large bound document that you have. And then the second letter is probably a prettier version, has our letterhead at the top. That's the audit communication letter that we'll get to a little bit later in the presentation. The first question we typically get asked, as it relates to an audit, everybody wants to know, well, what was the audit opinion? What is the results of the audit? So, you'll see on this slide, and you'll see within the annual comprehensive financial report, actually, three audit opinions are included within the document. The first audit opinion towards the front of the document is our independent auditor's report over the financial statements. We have issued what we would consider to be a clean or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning that we don't take exception to any of the amounts or the disclosures in the financial statements. We feel that they're materially correct and reported in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. The second auditor's opinion that you'll find is towards the back of the document. It's titled, "The Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Controls and Compliance."
What page are you on, Abby?
I'm on page 154 in the document, so way towards the back.
Got it.
As part of an audit for the city, we're required to audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which is why this opinion is here. So, in looking at that opinion, we're required to audit the internal controls and report any items that we feel rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal control. You'll note in this opinion, we have not listed any items there that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So, that would also be considered to be a clean opinion there. The third opinion, then, starts on page 156, so just right behind, and that's titled, "The Report on Compliance for Major Federal Award Programs." So, again, as it relates to the audit of the city, we're required to audit compliance in accordance with OMB Uniform Guidance. This is the audit on the federal dollars that the city receives. If we had identified any material instances of noncompliance as a result of our procedures, we would be required to indicate that within this opinion. You'll note there, there were no material instances of noncompliance noted. So, all three of the auditor opinions that are included within the document would be what we consider to be clean audit opinions. I wanted to point out just a few items as it relates to fiscal year 21 that are maybe a little bit different throughout the financial statements. Now, I didn't jot page numbers down, but just some high-level items. So, you'll note some references throughout the report to the COVID-19 pandemic and the ongoing financial effects of the pandemic on the city's financials. You'll also note in the document both the issuance of fire station bonds and sanitation revenue bonds that occurred during 2021. And then, related to sanitation specifically, the purchase of the capital assets for the sanitation fund resulted in some major capital outlays within that fund during 2021. You'll also note within the document, there is a section in footnote number one that discloses the new accounting standards that were implemented by the city during fiscal year 2021. The two that had a pretty significant impact are the first two bullets on the slide here, Gatsby Statement Number 84 on fiduciary activities, and Gatsby Statement Number 97 on deferred compensation plans. So, as part of those two standards and the adoption of those two standards, we did have to evaluate anything that we considered to be a potential component unit, which included the defined benefit and defined contribution plans, the 157 arrangement that the city has, as well as just anything else that may be considered to be an investment trust fund, another type of trust fund, bank accounts that may have had the city's financial statement or, excuse me, the city's name on them. We had to evaluate those to determine whether they now met the criteria, specifically in Gatsby 84, to meet the criteria of being either a component unit or a fiduciary activity. Now, as a result of those two standards and the adoption, we did have to restate some beginning balances in the report, so that we were reporting those things, again, materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The third bullet point there, Statement Number 98, was probably an accountant's favorite accounting standard that was adopted this year. It really changed the name of this document. It used to be called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Now, you'll see it's called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So, not a significant change, just a wording change in the name of this document. To discuss, then, kind of what you as a council member may want to know about this document, you'll want to at least understand the financial reporting, financial statement preparation for this document. So, within here, you'll see both reporting by fund, which would be kind of the individual, you know, you could think of them like departments, the sanitation fund, the water fund. Each of them has to have its own set of balanced books. And then, there's also the government-wide or the consolidated, kind of the city as a whole, level of financial reporting. You'll also see some component unit information in there. That's related specifically to Baswa, and also to the airport and the library foundation, and how their relationships with the city pull them in and be to be part of the city's report. Now, towards the beginning of the document, you'll see a section titled, "Management's Discussion and Analysis." I know all of you want to take this document home, read it cover to cover. I think it's about 160 pages or so. But if you decide that that's not what you want to do tonight, I understand. You can take that Management's Discussion and Analysis, it's roughly eight to 10 pages, towards the beginning of the document. It gives really good, high-level information about the financials, it gives some condensed financial information, and then it also provides analysis, year over year, what changed, as well as some information about capital asset and long-term debt balances. So, it's kind of the easy read of the 200 pages, right? And it is written by Hannah, management here at the city. So, we do have a responsibility to at least review and understand and make sure there is nothing contradictory within that Management's Discussion and Analysis, but that section is written by management for the purpose, for the users of the financial statements is that easy read. Behind the Management's Discussion and Analysis, you'll find the basic financial statements, as well as in the footnotes, which dive a little bit more in depth into the balances that you'll see in those financial statements. And then, because the city has chosen to report on the annual comprehensive financial report as opposed to just a basic set of financial statements, you'll also see a statistical section that provides some really good economic and demographic information for the city. Finally, because the city reports in this large document, they do submit this document for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So, you will see the certificate that the city received within this document. It's actually the certificate that was received for fiscal year 2020, but the city does intend to submit this document for fiscal year 21 to, you know, attempt to receive that same I didn't intend to go real in-depth into any of the balances in the financial statements, but if you have specific questions as you're looking through the document, I'd be happy to answer them today, or you have my contact information, I'd be happy to answer them at a later point in time. But I did want to just touch on a few high-level items, so we're going to kind of walk through this second document. This is the audit communication letter. Sometimes we refer to it as either a management letter or a letter to those charged with governance. I believe it was included within your packet. So, as we, as we think about what is an audit, the one thing I do want to point out in the first page of this letter is that an audit isn't designed to look at every single transaction. An audit is designed to look at transactions based on a risk-based approach. We look at audit tests, we set scopes, we look at transactions throughout the audit, but we don't audit every single transaction. Hannah can attest to that, and I'd still probably be vouching invoices if I did. We are required to disclose to governance several items, and it's kind of the high-level items we've included on the slide here. The significant accounting estimates, you'll see those listed in the letter, the items that we consider to be important for governance to understand. You'll also see a section there on financial statement disclosures, being the evaluation of potential component units for the city. That's kind of that new item under Gatsby Statement 84, as well as we've listed their commitments and contingencies and the tax abatement footnote as being of particular importance to the city. You'll see a section here titled, "Audit Adjustments." So, if as part of our audit, we had come in and had to propose any changes to the amounts or to the disclosures in the financial statements that we felt rose to a material level, we would have to list those audit adjustments within the letter. It's a great place for me to give kudos to Hannah and the team at the city for the great job that they do keeping the books and records for the city. As a result of our audit, we did not have to propose any audit adjustments or material changes to the financial statements. One of the things that you'll also see that's on the slide but is not included in the letter is any mention of internal control matters. So, kind of like we talked about when we were looking at that audit opinion on internal control, if we had to come in and propose audit adjustments, we would have to evaluate whether there may be a control issue around why those audit adjustments were required. We also do look at the internal control structure for the city. We look at segregation of duties, kind of the, how the transactions flow within the city. How does the money come in? How does the money go out? What are the controls around all of that? And if we had identified any items that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, you would see those in the letter. Now, again, because we don't look at every single transaction, I don't, I can't audit every transaction. I can't issue a letter that says there were none. What I can tell you verbally is that we didn't identify anything we felt like needed to be reported. Within the letter, then, you'll also see a section titled, "Other Matters." So, we have included here some new accounting pronouncements that will be upcoming. So, these are things that will be either adopted in fiscal year 22 or fiscal year 23, depending on the timing of those new accounting pronouncements. And so, we've provided that information, and we will work with Hannah and also with other city management to make sure that those accounting standards are implemented accordingly, in accordance with the standard. The next several slides, then, we probably won't spend a ton of time on, but we did just provide some information for the council to see. This first slide shows property valuation, shows that it has continued to increase over the last five years. The next slide, then, shows the tax levy analysis. So, you'll see here for fiscal year 21, this is kind of the property tax requirement, or the amount that the city expects to collect under property tax collections for the year. The next couple of slides, then, show just some high-level information on the city's debt. This one is compared to assessed valuation. So, we have provided some comparable information for a few similarly sized cities across the state, and you'll see that the city of Beatrice is showing $132 of governmental debt to assessed valuation compared to the peer group of 214. The next slide shows debt per capita. Similarly, we've provided this information for both the city of Beatrice as well for some comparably sized cities, excuse me, and we've provided it to show both the governmental debt as well as the total debt. So, that total debt would include debt associated with electric, water, WPC, Baswa, and sanitation as well. And then, this last slide here shows for the general fund, so for the city's primary operating fund, we've calculated what we feel would be the total fund balance that the general fund holds at the end of fiscal year 21 compared to the expenditures during fiscal year 21. So, it notes here, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends at a minimum that the general fund have at least two months of regular operating expenditures in their fund balance. You'll see that the city, in total fund balance, is showing approximately nine months of expenditures, but some of that is not able to be spent, right? It's either in non-spendable form, maybe it's restricted for some reason. So, I've also shown that unassigned fund balance is representing approximately four and a half months of the general fund expenditures. So, you are at least, I would say, exceeding what the best practice would be. The last slide, then, I just opened it up for any questions that the council or mayor that you have.
Gentlemen, questions?
Great.
How we doing, Hannah? We fine?
Doing great.
Okay.
He knew that was coming, didn't he?
20 years.
It works. Well, like I, like I mentioned, I appreciate the time to come speak with you about the audit today. If at some point you do have questions, I'd be happy to answer them at a later point in time. Hannah can get you my contact information, and thank you.
Abby gave the same report last Thursday to the Board of Public Works, and so, this is a repeat for myself and Tobias, but it's good to hear that kind of information. It's good to hear that the city is in a good financial position and that we're checking all the boxes like we're supposed to. Thank you very much, Abby. Thanks, Hannah.
Mayor, just note that anybody who wants to read the ACFA, it's available on our website. So, it's already been uploaded and available for anybody's perusing.
All right, we have no public hearings this evening. Next is a resolution. Resolution Number 6865, approving the Beatrice Board of Public Works' application of $300,000 for a rural economic development grant and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all related documents and to adopt the revolving loan fund.
I move that Resolution Number 6865 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that Resolution Number 6865 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So, the USDA has a program that's out there, an economic development grant fund that's available, often called a red leg, is kind of the short-term acronym, if you will, for this particular grant. What it is, is the electric department is the only entity that's eligible under the city of Beatrice, so that's why the electric department's applying, not the city of Beatrice. They are applying for a $300,000 grant through this program. They have provided matching funds of $60,000. We have partnered with the hospital. So, if we are awarded this grant, we will turn around and loan it to the hospital. They will go out and purchase a roughly $497,000 piece of equipment. The hospital then has one year to repay the city. Upon repayment to the city of Beatrice, this money will go into a revolving loan fund that then we will use the revolving loan fund plan that's in there tonight to disperse those funds moving forward. So, that's where it comes from, that's how this grant is set up. The revolving loan fund plan itself, we've basically set it up to run very much like LB840 Plan does. We're going to use the same group of people, so the CARC board, the CARC board, will rely on them to also administer these funds. Qualifying projects, they're very similar, small business expansions and startups, industrial or commercial development, create or save jobs, those types of programs or projects are eligible. Things that are not eligible, they can't handle existing debt. So, if you just simply want to refinance existing debt, that does not qualify. It can't be 100% of the project, so you have to have some type of partner involved in your particular project. Minimums is, the minimum loan is $10,000. They've got to have at least 20% of the funds come from other sources, and the loan terms are 10 years or less. It's kind of broken out in there based upon what type of equipment it is or what you're doing, how long the loan term is. So, the process, again, is very similar to LB840. They'd make application to the city of Beatrice, myself. We would review it, then bring in the CARC board to review the application, make a recommendation to this body, and then ultimately, final approval here.
So, is there an interest rate on that?
The loan document says you have to charge less than prime.
Prime's three and a half today.
How long does this program, does it have a last, like, 10 years, 15, or is there an end date?
It's really as long as you want the program to continue. When you're done with the program, simply notify the federal government, send back with the money that you have, and--
So, if it's working good, it can be 20 years if--
It could be longer, yes, and you can make additional applications, so the electric department could apply for additional funds in the future, and can you add to this revolving loan fund? Yes.
Add some more money for economic development?
That's correct.
More tools.
Very positive.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? All right, and you vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 6865 has been passed and adopted. We have no ordinances this evening. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum?
No, Larry.
No, I want to hear it again, Larry.
Okay. You want to be back again?
Of course. It never gets old.
Larry Wolken, 1921 Irving. Just want to thank that I saved one property, got cleaned up, and I hope it's off to a good start. And another thing is, I don't know if we have an ordinance for nothing. These people always putting crap up by the street, free, and most of it's junk, and it sits there for weeks, so just something to look into, or just bring it up to your attention. So, thanks a lot.
You bet, Larry.
Yep.
Thanks for coming. With that, our next city council-- Mayor, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Come on up.
That's a nice smile. Hi, my name is Monty Merkel. I live at 7001 West Aspen Road, Claytonia. This is my daughter Holly. She lives here in Beatrice.
Hi, Holly.
We'll keep the rest of her address private. Go ahead and sit down, it's okay. Reason we're here is we're-- Reason we're here is we're working on advocating for awareness to Down Syndrome. So today being March 21st is also Crazy Socks Day, and yes, Dad has them on too. So anyway, we thought we'd come and visit with council just a little bit to try to bring more awareness to the community of folks with Down Syndrome in any way that we can possibly do that. I spoke to the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to try to get some information out to some businesses, but I thought I'd stop here and just see if there's any ideas you guys could throw my way, whether there's something we can do with some of the city agencies, you know, police station, fire departments, city library, whatever. I realize today being the 21st, it's World Down Syndrome Awareness Day, and so there's nothing you're going to be able to do about it in March 21st, 2022, but I've been about 25 years learning this, learning about it, and so I've got a little more time on my plate to be a better advocate. So I thought rather than wait until next year's get here, I'd start on the day for 2022. So, yeah, that's, I guess, if there's anything you can throw my way or make suggestions or things we can do, maybe things we can't do, by next year, we'll have some more science made and hopefully share with some of the local businesses, get them to put stuff on their marquee. The idea behind it, if we can bring more awareness to that community, we'll start to learn the things that they bring to society, whether they're employees or, you know, contributing in every way they can. She was able to come with me tonight. If we'd had it in the morning, she'd been at work. So, you know, these folks are working and spending money in our county and in your city here, and you like your job? Yeah. So anyway, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but that was the purpose for us to be here. I'm sure I answer any questions if you have any off the top of your head. I realize you didn't have a chance to prepare anything, but if you do, fire away.
Well, it's a public forum, so we can't really respond too much, but I think at the very least, we could do a proclamation next year just to bring some awareness, and maybe we can do a little brainstorming and see if we can come up with something, Monty.
That would be perfect. That was the purpose of us coming.
Appreciate you coming.
Monty, if you come up here, I got my card here, and you can contact me, and we can come up some ideas for next year.
Sounds good.
Ha, 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 got you, see?
You've got the mic.
Twenty-five.
Thank you for coming, Holly.
All right, with, is there anybody else? With that, next city council meeting is going to be on April the 4th in these chambers and a work session, March 28th at 7:00 in these chambers also. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
You want to do the city administrative report?
I'm sorry, did I forget you?
You can skip it if you want to, but that's all right.
Pretty easy to overlook. Mr. Templemyer, would you gracious, grace us with the city administrators' report, please?
I don't know, I don't know if I want to. No, Lincoln Street Project, we did have a meeting tonight. We had about 50 people come through the open house, which I thought was a good attendance. For those of you who are kind of wondering about that project, you will go back, they'll look at the comments they got, they'll come up with some ideas. We'll look to have a second open house sometime in May-June time period, seeing how things are progressing. At that point, hopefully bring back some different ideas that they're seeing as that project moves forward. Chief Stenber, Trailhead, they were supposed to start on the parking lots. The weather is not quite, you know, it hasn't rained forever till we went pour concrete, and now it wants to rain again. So once the weather cooperates, they're going to get started on that parking lot and get that project moving forward down there. And then if you notice in the monthly report there, we had roof damage from that December 15th little windstorm that came through. We had roof damage on a number of roofs, and so we've been working with insurance. And now I think FEMA has declared it a natural disaster as well, so we're working with them to see those projects get completed. But we had damage at Hannibal, at the library, at Chautauqua Park, at Riverside, and the Salt Barn. So we had a number of buildings that were damaged that we're working through, getting those repaired, so.
Questions of Tobias? Thank you for a very informative report.
Anytime, sir.
All right. All right, with that, next city council meeting, April 4th, work session 28th. Mr. McLean?
I move that the City, Beatrice City Council, go into closed session at 7:34 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that we go into executive session at 7:34 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thanks for the compliments, Larry.